Welcome to the Township of Springfield Planning Board for May 1st, 2023. Adequate notice has been given in sunshine clause. Notice was published on December 15th, 2022, and the local source, which is the official newspaper for the Township of Springfield for 2022 and 2023, and posted in the Annex Building on December 16th, 2022. Let's do a salute to the flag.
Our core of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or the nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Okay, biddy man, Rich Huber.
He's here. On his mouth.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Alex Kaiser.
Present.
David Barnett. Mr. Brian Brendel.
Here.
Ms. Marissa Ruggiero.
Here.
Mr. Aaron Lofer.
Here.
Mr. Richard Cedarquist. Mr. Brian Cantigallo.
Here.
Mr. Scott Wish.
Here.
Vice Chair Sharon Kessel.
Here.
And Chairman Jeff Tiger.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, perfect. Meeting minutes for April 2023 were posted on the Google Drive. Anyone have any concerns or issues with it? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the April? Go ahead.
Sorry. Motion to approve the April 2023 minute.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Marissa, were you here? Marissa's abstaining. Okay, good. Next thing, Front and Center appeared before us in April. The board acted favorably and approved the preliminary and final site plan with the variance for parking for application one dash 2023 S. Everyone have a chance to read the resolution? Any questions, concerns? Sharon wants to make a motion to approve after she sneezes.
Motion to approve, motion to approve Front and Center for Performing Arts for a preliminary and final site plan.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Kessel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Brendel.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantigallo.
Yes.
And Chairman Tiger.
Yes. Okay, let's take care of a little housekeeping up front media, out front media. Eight dash 2022 S, 11 Edison Place, Block 210, lots one and nine, for preliminary and final site plan for a conditional sign. That application's being carried until May 15th. We will have a special meeting that they have paid for on April fif- on May 15th at 6:30 in this room, not seven, 6:30 in this room for that. You do not get over. I'm sorry. So for any members of the public, which seems like there's a lot that are here for that application that is carried until May 15th at 6:30 in this chambers with no further notice. Cool. Next thing is our first out, first and final application, which is HDR Holdings, two dash 2023 S for 219 Morris Avenue, Block 803, Lot 5. This is for a minor site plan for a Wonder storefront. I believe Mr. Hale's here to give us a very, very brief overview of the application.
Something about a game at eight o'clock that people are interested in.
Yes, well, I think there's a pregame at 7:15.
Okay. Well, thank you all. Great to see you all again this evening. And yes, this is an application for Wonder Food Restaurant. You've probably all seen throughout town, the Wonder Trucks and Jason Botcher, who's here from the company, will explain, but their, their, the trucks are no more and now they're moving to Brooks, Brick and Mortar. Their first store is going to be opening up in Westfield and they're looking to have Springfield be their second location. I think you'll see from the exhibits, it's a pretty cool restaurant and concept, as were the trucks. We're here before the board for, in essence, minor site plan, site plan waiver, it's conditional use. We submitted documentation. We believe we meet all the conditions. We've received Mike and Keenan's reviews, no problem, and we can comply with all those, those items. And we don't require any variances. And what I'd like to do is just briefly call upon Jason Botcher from Wonder, which in this application is HDR Holdings, to give a little background about the change from the trucks to the brick and mortar restaurants and his excitement about coming to Springfield. He could probably share with me here.
Jason, raise your, Jason, raise your right hand. You swear to tell them all.
I do. Jason Botcher. B O T T, B O T T, C H E R.
And you're licensed what?
I, I used to be a licensed planner. I was AICP certified and I had a CFM, that's Certified Floodplan Manager. That was back when I worked for the Hudson County Division of Planning and when I worked for the Township of Cranford after that.
Okay, so you're a professional planner. Did you keep your license?
I did not.
Okay, but you're still a professional planner and you just unlicensed.
Correct.
But he is here actually as a representative of, of Wonder.
So he's not even going to be a, he'll be more of a fact witness, either?
Correct. Correct. And since we don't.
Turn a lot to the table.
But actually, yes, Cranford, he was in Cranford and Wonder stole him away from there. So, Mr. Botcher, just give the board, you've heard my brief explanation or introduction, tell them a little bit about the Wonder, bit of the history and the change from the trucks to brick and mortar.
Yeah, sure. So I'm sure you're probably all familiar with Wonder based on those vehicles that essentially appeared out of thin air for one day in Springfield. We've decided to make a pretty significant shift away from that model of direct delivery and preparation of food in front of your house. And, and we're looking to build out a robust restaurant network, starting with the first 10, which we will have open by the end of 2023. That would be about five in New York City, five in New Jersey and Northern New Jersey, Springfield being the second in Northern New Jersey. I can dive into all the operational reasons why we're making the shift, but I'm not going to do that.
But I think you have a better shot at getting approved if we were the first one. I wouldn't have started with second. The first or second would be a better way of saying it. Go ahead.
But we are, we're incredibly excited about reintroducing ourselves here in Springfield and the surrounding towns. It's one of the reasons why we selected this site is because it is so centrally located to where we have a loyal, robust customer base. And this gives us an opportunity to get a new location up and running quickly. I think anybody that's familiar with us knows that we move at a rapid pace and this is going to be no different.
For the record, just tell the world, at least on TV, what it is that Wonder does.
So Wonder, we are a food technology startup. What we do is we partner with chefs and restaurants across the country, renowned chefs and restaurants across the country, from celebrity chefs like Bobby Flay, Michael Simon, Marcus Anderson, and over to restaurants that top of their class in their cuisines, Chai Panee, Texas, Tejas Barbecue out of Dallas, Texas, Tex Mex out of the Southwest.
And then what do you?
And we make it, we get, we give you the opportunity to buy that legit, legitimate cuisine here. And that's the point. We reproduce their cuisines through that, those partnerships. And previously, we would complete that production in front of your house when you made an order through the app and the, the mobile restaurant would show up to your house. Now we're moving that mobile restaurant and putting it into the four walls here at 219 Morris Avenue.
And tell us a little bit about what you plan for this specific location. Now you have a couple of exhibits, if you want to grab those or point to them.
These in our packet? Are they in our packet? Were these, these not submitted, right?
That was submitted.
That was submitted, okay.
So this was submitted, that's just an illustration of the site plan. You can keep that one up.
Here. Why don't you bring that a little closer, Sylvan?
So this is just a, a property survey illustrating the location that we're going to be actually occupying, which is about 2,800 square feet, one of the reasons why we like this location. Easy front of house, back of house, we have access to refuse, great opportunity for our, employees to park at the back, along with deliveries, all because we do have a rear entry, which limits our ability or any opportunity, it mitigates the opportunity to cause a nuisance at the front of house, circulation issues, anything like that. All delivery would go through the back, front of house would be dedicated to onsite patrons.
And just, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, just briefly touch upon hours of operation, number of employees.
Hours of operation would be 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Number of employees is going to vary. We'll have 10 working onsite between the back of house and front of house, mostly dedicated to production, cooking, so chefs onsite. And then anywhere between five and 10 delivery drivers, it's going to flex up or down depending on demand.
Those folks will be all parking in the back?
Correct. Actually, ideally, they're not onsite at all. So our delivery drivers will be Wonder employees. They'll be using their own passenger vehicles. Those vehi- those vehicles will not be branded Wonder in any way and they won't be kept onsite overnight.
Okay, that's fine, but I think you'll hear some questions about parking and.
Yes.
Positioning that condition of approval would be that those would all be through the back.
That's right, yeah. So we can actually touch on, and we'll, we'll skip the renderings for the time being, the one right after that, Sylvan? So this, this illustrates this exhibit.
This one has to be marked as a.
A new exhibit, so, yeah. So this, this exhibit highlights what was. Revision comparison, three, 22, 2023. So the, the floor plan that you see at the top, that's actually, this is the new test fit. We call it a test fit because we're experimenting with, with how we want the layout to be, this being one of the first. We're toying with different ideas. The bottom is the exhibit that was submitted with the application. You can see there's a, a linear configuration to the kitchen, to the back of house here. We've learned through our first location in the Upper West Side that that's not the most efficient configuration for both throughput and for just labor efficiency. So we've developed this U-shaped, U-shaped pod in our kitchen, which reduces labor requirements and it actually increases throughput. So we've shifted, shifted that, that test fit design, which is, this is going to be more likely to be implemented, which has also given us the opportunity to increase the size of the front of house and, and make sure that we're providing 12 seats, as noted in the statement of principal points that was submitted with the application.
And just briefly touch on, I know we're here with your planning background, it's a conditional use restaurants in this zone. Can you touch on, if you could, the four conditions and just confirm that we meet them all?
Sure. And Sylvan can provide additional detail after I'm done, if necessary. But one of the conditions is that there be hoods or exhaust for all restaurants. We will be designing this kitchen with hoods. Obviously, those details aren't necessarily available until we get through the construction document phase, but we'll be, we will be compliant with that condition. Second condition being off straight, off street parking, I'm good with this. The previous tenant was aerophysical therapy. I'm trying to remember now. I believe the parking requirement for a medical facility or immediate care facility was one stall per 200 square feet of floor space, 14. For this particular space, our use actually decreases the parking requirement. And so based on that, there's no increase in use. Beyond that, there is 340 parking stalls onsite, based on a rough analysis.
I don't know if I just agree that you're not going to increase, but I do agree there's plenty of parking there.
Yeah.
If you can bring into your discussion too, how many seats that are going to be there if people want to eat there?
There will be 12 seats for, for patrons that wish to dine in.
Okay.
So that'll be a mix between bench seating with two tops, two tops of one seat and then bench seating. There'll be three configurations of those resulting in 12 total.
Continue.
And I know.
Some of, yeah, okay. One other condition, the grease trap. So that's another requirement, that all restaurants have grease traps integrated into their kitchen design. That is something that Sylvan can touch on as well, if necessary.
You have to do it under building.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's UCC compliant. Everything we, we submit to the building department will be UCC compliant.
And if you could confirm on behalf of the applicant, you've had an opportunity to review both the planner and the engineer's report that were seated here this evening. Do you have any problem complying with any of those terms and conditions?
No, I, I will just emphasize that the township engineer, Mike Disco, did note that he would recommend a condition that no vehicles be onsite, the former mobile restaurants that we used. We're in the middle of, let's call it dispossessing ourselves of those vehicles, so we will not have any vehicles onsite. I'll concede that right off the bat.
Talk about, you know, what my concern is, and then we'll open up the board for some questions of Mr. Disco, is, you know, people come for pickup if there's no spots in the front, because crunch really made that area, you know, a lot more, a lot more cars in that parking lot. Where are they going to park? You know, most people will double park and then make it tougher to go there, so that's what I wanted to hear some discussion on. I mean, have you approached the, I don't know how the board will feel, dedicating a few spots up front? Have you talked to the landlord? Is that something they want to do? I have no idea what the rest of the board thinks, but.
Yes, that was.
Mr. Hughes wrote something about that in his letter.
Correct. And so referencing that, and I believe it was, I can't remember which point it was, but we have had that conversation with the landlord. To this point, I don't believe he's been amenable to dedicating parking stalls for pickup, but we can definitely approach him again and say that at the request of the board.
I want to see what the board thinks. It might just, one out of nine or whatever.
As far as I'm aware, at this point in time, he hasn't been amenable to, to dedicating any parking stalls for pickup.
Okay. Anything further, because I wanted to open up to our engineer?
Nothing right now, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Disco?
I really don't have anything. My one concern was addressed.
Well, so my concern that I wanted you to put on the record is, you know, this applicant, this, this site has been before us many times. There were a lot of conditions of, that we've had from every application. One of the conditions that would be of approval is that all those prior conditions have met. You can talk about that. I know that I've been on the site, I've seen landscaping, I've seen your pictures, your report was very detailed. Can you explain to the board, you know, the progress of that and if there's anything that's going to hold that up, that, that the way the board can evaluate that?
Right, so the last time the site was before this board was for the sign, and at that time, there was three principal concerns outside of the sign itself. One was the pavement condition. They had done that through the process of the multiple meetings, so that didn't actually land in as a resolution condition, but at the time, they had sufficiently addressed the, the potholes or whatever pavement condition you want to attribute it to. Second was the dumpsters. That was rectified in a fairly, I think, dramatic way. They had no screening of the dumpsters on the side towards Linden Avenue and they are now fully screened. And I went by on Sunday, I went by this morning, the, the screens and the fences were shut. Won't be like that 100% of the time, but the dumpsters, the bottom line, the dumpsters are in there and the zoning officer is working with the new management team. And they're actually, the management team has basically put the onus on the individual tenants there because it's those tenants that basically arrange for their pickup and the like. So it's been working out very well. And that's been in place for quite some time. The landscaping was the last thing that happened, well beyond the supposed due date of that. This spring, that all happened. And again, I was very pleased they sent the landscaping plan in. They put way more landscaping than even their plan had. I counted 14 trees and 100 and some odd shrubs low lying at the perimeter, all on the perimeter. So with the, with the roads and all that, you do have to be cognizant of some site issues, you know, coming through a state highway. They mulched it last week. It's in much better shape than it's been in a long time.
You're comfortable that the.
Very comfortable with it, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Just in that regard, Mike is a great help because when we first met to talk about this concept, he provided us with prior resolution and the review letters, so that was helpful because we wanted to make sure we didn't come into a situation where the landlord was on compliance. And it helps for the. Yeah, I don't want to be holding aesthetics of this, of the site for their operation.
Perfect. Anything that you have additional from your letter?
You know, I think the only other comment was just about the sign, could you just like confirm compliance with the township's.
Yeah, any sign that, that we put up, whether it be window signage or wall mounted, we'll be complying with the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, there's a percentage of how much.
20%.
Window and then I guess you're going to go right into whatever the.
Yeah, we're going to figure out a way to mount it because that's an odd design, but we'll figure it out.
Whatever, as long as it meets the code and works with Mr. Disco, we're fine.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll say this, the schematic, certainly the, the wall sign is going to comply, it's just the window and the door coverage.
Okay, we'll leave that to you to work out with him. The board will be fine with that. Okay. Mr. Wishner?
Just following up for Mr. Disco, I think in a prior meeting, David Barnett brought up an issue with the pylon sign not fully complying. I think they put in the sign, but there was supposed to be some.
They, they're doing that.
Artscaping around.
Yep, they, they saw cut and removed or partially removed the pavement of the five parking spaces and that landscaping's going in short.
Okay. Okay.
It's all going to happen.
Okay, so we're not.
I think they're putting curbing or block around it, so dress it up.
Just in the nick of time.
I do have a few questions. You should, you shouldn't have started with me, but. So operationally, you, you mentioned that there were, I think, 12 customer seats, but no waitstaff or anything, correct?
No, so there wouldn't be any waitstaff.
So would all orders be done through the app or could customers walk in, place an order and sit down and eat it?
Customers will be able to walk in and take an order. It's not going to be app exclusive.
Okay. And in the instances of those that have opened under this format, I think you mentioned one on the Upper West Side, how much walk-in traffic was pre-ordered?
You know, it, it's interesting, right now, it's still too early to understand what it's really going to be. It's about a 50/50 split, but comparing the Upper West Side to Springfield, New Jersey, it's two different worlds.
Realize that, okay. As far as the wastes goes, and this has been a constant and you've heard it mentioned already during this session, are you guys arranging for your own hauling and how frequently pickups are going to be made?
Yes, we, we contract with Waste Management to handle our waste, refuse at all our sites and, and it would be no different here.
Okay, and how many times per week?
Because our culinary engineering team is so great, our, and our forecasting team is so amazing, we don't actually have a lot of food waste, so I would imagine it's probably going to be once every two days or so for pickup and it would, it would flex up or down depending on need.
Okay. No other questions? I would agree with the parking. If we can stress to the landlord pickup, just because personal, the, the, I know from picking up, it's very frustrating going to a restaurant and the, the few spaces close are tied up and you're stuck walking around. So it's probably only for your, your benefit too, to have, I don't know, 10-minute, 15-minute parking and, and the landlord should hopefully be amenable to that for, for, for having a such probably what will be a good tenant. And just two other comments, one being the site is looking a lot better. The sign is, is actually nice, so it is a, a decent addition to the downtown and, and starting to come together. And then just lastly, a comment on Wonder, no specific question, but I, I do want to, A, Springfield was one of your early champions and we've partnered over the last few months under my ram, when I was mayor and, and you gave us a few bucks in exchange for housing those trucks. So if you want to keep those trucks there, I, I'm not going to bring them back, we could use the revenue. But I, I am very, assuming this is going to pass and I'm going to vote in favor, I'm looking forward to continuing our, our partnership and, and, and working with you and building it. And, and trust me, I miss it. I, I did like Wonder, it was very good to have.
Appreciate that, thanks.
I just have one comment about the parking situation. I know it's really not within your control, but I, I, I hope the landlord reconsider's because I think it's really bad when the delivery drivers double park and then it frustrates everyone, not just customers of your establishment, but all of the other businesses. So I hope, hope the landlord listens.
Yeah.
I'm real excited to have you guys here.
I definitely take it one step forward. I think I'm going to recommend to the board that they put a condition of approval, wait before you get upset, that they provide three 10-minute parking spots-ish, subject, subject to waiver, which we can waive, which Mike Disco can waive if he feels it's not going to work out. So you don't have to come back before the board, but at least may give you some weight with, with the landlord. Because I'm a little concerned and, and, and Rich, I hear you getting a little, but I'm a little concerned, I drove through there the other day, if people start parking in front, then we will have very tough for people to back out of spots and people to go around, make ourselves a situation.
I mean, Echo during pandemic had 15-minute pickup and all that, but up here, they, it never was and they had restaurants up there and I, I'd like to see it, but I don't think you're going to get it.
Crunch didn't come in, then you would have had more flexibility there.
Oh, yes.
Crunch is pushing immediately say that. I mean, it's up to the board, we can vote on that afterwards, but I would suggest that we issue a condition of approval, if the board feels favorable, that they have to provide three 10-minute, 15-minute parking lots. The, we'll, we'll give Mr. Disco the ability to waive that condition with working with the applicant.
Let me try and help you. I haven't seen you all in a long time, so I can't be quiet.
New guy on.
I'm the new kid. I'm seeing this on almost every application for almost any restaurant, anywhere that we're doing it, regardless of whether we're on Steve's side of the table or on this side of the table. There's always going to be two, three, four spaces for no more than 10-minute parking for the pickup stuff. It just keeps the site moving, it just works. So I, I don't think you're asking for anything extraordinary and it's the way things are going.
I, I disagree with everything because the problem is you've got tenants who have had leases in place for a long time. What happens when they want spots? They don't have any leverage.
Doesn't matter here because they don't need leverage because you're overparked.
All right, but as a tenant of a shopping center and I've got a new guy moving in and he gets what he wants and I don't get what I want?
Tenant can always come in and ask because you're overparked. I'm telling you, it's being done all the time and it works like a charm and I've never heard that complaint.
Okay.
Been doing it now for about three, about two and a half years. So I, I just don't see it as an issue.
I, I do and I would vote not in favor of having a condition based on dedicated parking, but it does make sense, but it.
I hear you, but I, I'm more worried right now that their business model is a lot of pickups back and forth. I mean, maybe, maybe the liquor store has a lot of pickups back and forth, who knows? But all the other businesses there don't have that. And if, if, if they write, write in the front, right where all the entrance to crunch is, start, people start parking or, or, you know, double parking, running in, getting their food, I think it's going to be, it could be an issue. So we'll see what the rest of the board says. It could be some leverage and it may not work out and Mr. Disco can work with you.
All right, I just have my choose about the parking.
Will Wonder delivery drivers be the only delivery mechanism or will we also be like Uber Eats and?
So our intent is to own everything end to end because then we can own the entire experience, customer experience. Right now in the Upper West, West Side, we are using third-party delivery between Uber Eats, Seamless, whoever else, all of, all of those. As of right now, I'm not 100% as to whether or not we would use third-party. This would, the intent would be that we own the entire experience.
To the extent we can, if they do go third-party, I'd like to have them go around the back as well, if possible.
Yeah.
Just because that's going to be more run-in, run-in, run-out type service.
Some of the, some of the concern that I have is that they're in the back, so. All right, so that's fine.
Yeah, in the test fit, we actually have a dispatch area at the rear door, just for that purpose.
Like if you have a whole mechanism set up back there, I'd rather short-term, you know, not me going to pick up my food, but Uber Eats is going to be in and out to the extent that you want to do it in the back.
100%.
Good point. Very excited to have you.
Question I have, based on, I don't know if there's too much experience to base it on, but based on your projections, what do you think your percentage will be actually be deliveries as opposed to people coming themselves to pick up?
Just understanding changed consumer trends since COVID in, in particular, these kinds of locations, you're seeing about a 75 delivery, 15 pickup, 10 dine-in split. That's just generally what, what we're seeing at this point. dine-in split. That's just generally what, what we're seeing at this point. That doesn't match what we're seeing in the Upper West Side right now, it's more fifty-fifty. So, you know, we're actually, we're, we're, I'm not gonna say we're in the dark, we have a, a rough idea of what it's gonna look like, and it's that seventy-five, fifteen, ten. But, you know, it, it's, part of the exciting part of working for Wonder is, we're learning something new every day. And when we open Westfield, we're gonna have a, a better idea. And when we open Springfield, that's statistical data set just expands. I'm, I'm actually gonna sabotage the Westfield location, so this opens first.
That's a condition of approval, too.
I just wanna follow up on my question.
Sure.
So I, I also think you'll have deliveries more as a greater percentage. So you're saying that all the owner owns, excuse me, delivery, deliverers will have, will be going through the back?
Correct.
Now, I know that back area is, is a, is a drive-through as well. People are driving through there to get to the front, to get to the street next to it, whatever. How many delivery trucks do you think you'll, or delivery vehicles do you think you will have?
We're gonna be using five to ten couriers, essentially, delivery drivers for this location. Like I said, flexing up or down as necessary. I don't see us using, I, I hope we get to the point where we need ten, but my expectation is it's gonna live around that five number.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have periods of time, like dinner, lunch perhaps, where you're gonna be congested, have a lot more deliveries than you will at, say, in, I don't know, night at night. So do you foresee a problem with all these delivery vehicles coming and going?
No, so I'm actually, we're, Wonder does something kinda like, uh, one of the delivery companies, where they have to, employees, management has to go out and deliver, so they can understand what the average employee experience is. We do the same thing at Wonder. When it was the MR business, we had to do ride-alongs on the MRs, to understand what our, of course, our chefs on the road were going through on a daily basis. We did the same thing at, at, at the Upper West Side location. We had to work the front of house. And when it came to that, the amazing thing is, we, we use runners to get everything out to our couriers, and they're gone in a heartbeat. It's, it's really incredible. If they're in front of the store for a minute while they're waiting for an order, that's a long time. So that's one of the things that we're emphasizing, is that we want that order to eat time to be as, as small as possible, as low as possible. So in terms of keeping vehicles onsite and staging, not the intent. The intent is they're all gonna be on the road. They pull up within a minute, sixty seconds, that next order's in the car and they're off.
I have a question for, for the chair. Do you think there's something we can do where we can cordon off where their delivery vehicles are, so it doesn't coincide with other, on other traffic?
Yeah, so, Mr. Disco, I'm actually thinking that's a little concerning to me just a tad, with all the cars passing there, because you have the entrance, the egress and the entrance and leaving over there. I think it'll be okay. And is the lighting okay there for the cars? You wanna, do you have it on, on the thing so you can show? Light would be my, oh, is that gonna be your question?
The question, just in the lighting, just, actually, less with the cars, but more with the, that, if I recall, not that I hang there much after dark, but I remember that being a very dark back, and, and was gonna wonder if you were proposing any lighting, because you're, you're delivery guys, especially in the winter after five o'clock, it's gonna be very pitch dark for-
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, that's something we would wind up looking at anyway, and if, if there was a position or a, a reason to have additional lighting back there, we would do that.
We'll have Mr. Disco work with you guys to determine if that's the case, if the landlord needs to install it, it needs to install it.
Yeah, that's fine.
The units on the end, for instance, the liquor store and what's next to it, GNC, they actually have entrances from the rear. There's a, there's a row of bank parked near.
Oh, so then it's okay then?
Generally, I don't recall that being a problem, that you were walking in dark.
Maybe you can take it next-
Yeah, this is further down a little bit, yeah, we could look at it.
When you leave tonight, you can go look at it.
Yeah.
Perfect. It'll be dark soon. Any other follow-up question?
The, the lighting was gonna be my-
My question, go ahead, yeah.
Is there, is there a way that we can cordon off spots that would only be for these delivery vehicles, to avoid any kind of, any traffic congestion back there, especially in the evenings?
What do you think with that? Because-
They're all striped spots, I mean, so if, if they're, if they're coming in and gonna be loaded within sixty seconds, there's room along the edge of the building where they can be.
And, and it'd be safe?
Well, it's a fire zone, so in the absence of a fire, within a minute, they're gonna get loaded. Otherwise, they're gonna just find a spot.
Spot, yeah, and get out.
Coordinate however they do it, cell phone, whatever.
I don't know who else is gonna use that. When people go in for GNC, they're going in the front.
All the parking right now that you're seeing is in the front. You go, if you, a member of Crunch, you can park right in the back and walk right through the alleys.
Yeah, I don't think they realize that.
Wouldn't there be something wrong if all five of your drivers were there at the same time? It means they're not out making deliveries.
Exactly, we would have a concern about that.
The demand may not be five spots for the drivers.
And that's why, you know, when it comes to the delivery drivers and the couriers in the Upper West Side, we flex, we're, we're looking to flex up and down as necessary. As demand grows, which I hope it will, then, you know, we would make the determination as to whether or not we need to add an additional delivery driver.
I would imagine your success will be your detriment at this point. But, Mr. Cantagalo?
Uh, yes, thank you. I also would like to echo the sentiment that the ten- or fifteen-minute parking in the front of the building is something that's important. I'm not sure if it can be only used for them, or possibly could be used for other tenants also, for the whole shopping plaza is part of the solution there, because of the liquor store, people are in and out of there quickly. Also, do you have a idling policy for your drivers?
We do.
You do, and what is the policy?
It's a no-idling policy.
No-idling policy.
It was the same thing with the mobile restaurants. Once we converted to kitchens that were electric, the intent was that they had to shut down those vehicles to avoid idling.
And, and do you have this model anywhere else, except this is the second store? Do you have it in any other parts of the state or country?
Uh, so we will have five in northern New Jersey, though, some of those locations-
Currently not?
Tri-state area.
Do, do you have parking spots in the back that are just gonna be for you and your drivers and your employees?
How do you set up Westfield?
Uh, Westfield, there is no dedicated parking.
So you're only in sight, right? If you win a bagel store, right?
Uh, there's a bagel store, and I believe the dry cleaners, it's the former CVS.
So that's between you and the landlord, but I've worked for a distribution company for twenty-five years, and there is downtime. And when you have five to ten people looking for parking spots, and you don't have somewhere necessarily for drivers to hang out inside of a building, they're gonna hang out in their cars, and it could get pretty messy. And I don't think you have the room back there currently for that, so you, that's something you may wanna strongly consider to discuss with the landlord.
I'll emphasize that with the operation team for sure.
Okay, so I think we don't, I think you've gotten to the point, we don't need any more witnesses. Just wanna talk through with the board. Mr. Disco? Did you use anything further, Jen?
No.
Good, okay, good. So let's talk through, I think, Glenn, you wanna read the conditions that you've heard thus far, please?
Yeah, I don't know if you'll agree with them, but I'll read them.
Yeah, okay, well, leave the parking one out for right now. That's the only one.
Uh, deliveries will all be from the back. No vehicles shall be stored on-site overnight. Need more prior conditions, although it seems like that's already been satisfied. I'm gonna just-
Don't know what her Jeff.
They should work with the board's engineer and attempt to provide three spaces, not, three timed spaces on the site. It's got nothing to do with this applicant. I, I think that was a pretty good idea, because that way, anybody come in and they're just having to run into Crunch, just get their registration card or something, they can use those spaces.
Or the liquor store. It makes sense.
Or the liquor store, no, okay. I was on the other side, so probably ten to fifteen minutes.
If needed, they'll add additional ones on the rear in coordination with the board engineer.
So what I'd like to do is not hold them up. I mean, you could beat up the landlord, hopefully he's not watching the livestream right now, but that, well, well, if he is, he knows that Mr. Disco has some authority to do this through that. So you can work with Mr. Keens to wording of that. But the board is strenuously, I mean, we're gonna vote, requesting that there are three spots for the entire site to be able to use. And if, we'll leave it to Mr. Disco. If he feels it's four, whatever, they'll work through that together.
Yeah, I do like that tack, leaving them unmarked and just specifying ten-minute parking.
Yeah. And work-
Make it four?
Well, four would be, I think, better.
Four, yeah, we'll go with four. I mean, work with Mr. Disco. I mean, I don't think the board's gonna come back and say if it's five or it's three, you know, you wanna a certain amount of spots to avoid the congestion of parking in front of the spot. So I'm gonna ask the board just to, for Mr. Cantagalo down, we'll just quickly poll the board, see if everyone's comfortable with those conditions?
I agree.
I'm good.
You good? I'm good, Sharon?
Agree.
Yep, as long as it doesn't, it doesn't hold them up, and he has the ability to waive, we're good.
Yes, agree.
Yeah, I'm good is non-exclusive.
Okay.
Non-exclusive.
He runs property management. He's got enough. Okay, so seeing everyone, let me take this opportunity to open this matter up to the public. Any members of the public that wish to come speak? Anyone sitting behind? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this matter to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
So.
I'll move to, to approve the application with the conditions that we put on, okay?
Second. Second.
I don't know. Jen, you figure it out.
Okay.
I don't think we need it on this.
I don't think you do either, you gotta submit though, for informational purposes.
Yeah, okay.